I should like to extend a very warm welcome to all members who were in the chamber this morning, and indeed to all members of the public who are sitting up there in the gallery with a prime seat. Again, as before, before we continue with the agenda, there are some general housekeeping announcements I have to make. If the fire alarm sounds, all members in the chamber and observers in the public gallery are invited to make their way out of the building and go to the fire assembly point, which you will find outside the Great Hall. And a second reminder, please remember to switch off your mobile phones or put them on silent. Thank you very much indeed. I'm now on item one on the full agenda. I'm going to invite Debbie Vaughan to give me any apologies which she may have received for this council meeting this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies have been received from Nick Adams King, Fran Carpenter, Mel Kendall, Hugh Lumby, Aaron Mumalanini, Russell Oppenheimer, Jackie Porter, Kim Taylor, Sean Woodward, and from honorary orderman Chris Carter, Keith Chapman, and Andrew Gibson. Thank you.
Are there any more apologies?
Oh, is it David Harrison, Chair?
Thank you very much, councillor David Harrison. I don't recall if you read out, but also councillor Fran Carpenter has sent her apologies. Are there any further apologies from anyone? Right, thank you very much indeed. I now must remind members about the need to declare any declarations of interest which can be made at the relevant item when it is reached. So all members who believe that they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at this meeting must declare that interest and, having regard to Part Three, Paragraph 1.5 of the County Council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with Paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at this meeting should consider having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Four of the code, whether such interest should be declared, and having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Now, I know members will have read their Code of Conduct through and through and be very familiar with every word and every paragraph. So I'm sure the message has got through to everyone today. So are there any disclosures to be made? There are none, thank you. So item three on the agenda. Members, you will have had the minutes of the last full council meeting circulated some time ago. You've had full opportunity to read those minutes. I haven't received any notification of any errors or small amendments. So may I take it that you are satisfied that the minutes are a true and accurate record? And may I sign those minutes? Thank you. Members, I understand that there are three deputations that have been received that we will hear this morning in accordance with Standing Order 12. And just to remind everyone that each deputation has 10 minutes, a total of 10 minutes. So the first deputation, I understand, is going to be made by Helen Godleman and Earl Crook, who I believe will address issues and concerns that they have about emergency access and road safety issues in South Grove and Grove Road, Leamington. Good morning to you, Helen. Welcome to the chamber.
Good morning, Madam Chairman.
We're looking forward to what you have to say, but a reminder that there is a clock, I'm not sure where it is, which will be ticking away, and you have a total of 10 minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. Madam Chairman, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Helen Godleman, and I'm here today as spokesperson for the residents of South Grove and Leamington. I would like to bring to your attention the ongoing roads and safety accessibility issues in South Grove and the nearby roads south of Leamington High Street. South Grove is a small residential road in central Leamington, close to the town quay, the railway station, and the high street. Over the past few years, there has been a noticeable increase in vehicles parked irresponsibly, particularly since the redevelopment of the Travis Perkins site into housing, and more recently, the installation of parking meters in the high street. Parking on narrow sections of road blocking access for emergency vehicles, near corners and junctions restricting visibility, obscuring sightlines, enforcing cyclists and other vehicles to travel on the wrong side of the road approaching blind corners. Vehicles obstructing pavements and drop curbs, preventing safe access or egress for pedestrians, and uses of wheelchairs, mobility scooters, or pushchairs. In 2019, the residents of South Grove formed a committee to liaise with the various authorities and discuss how to tackle the ongoing road safety problems. We contacted the community police, who pointed out the infringements of the highway code and other potential hazards. They suggested we contacted the town and district council to discuss parking restrictions that would be enforceable by the civil highway officers. We met with the town councillors and agreed in principle how to introduce parking restrictions focusing on the pinch points in South Grove and Grove Road, in line with those restrictions already in place in most of central Leamington. But then in 2020, Hampshire County Council took back the responsibility for on-street civil parking enforcement, and we had to restart negotiations with a new authority. So we contacted the appropriate departments to discuss procedures in obtaining the much-needed parking restrictions. Our emails and conversations were rebuffed by Hampshire Highways because the casualty-led data showed no injury accidents in South Grove. The fatality at the junction of South Grove and Grove Road was not included in the data. The cyclist knocked off her bike and injured in the same locality was also not included. And the statistics do not include the numerous near misses or unreported accidents. One South Grove resident had to have stitches to his lip due to falling off the curb into the road due to a vehicle obstructing the pavement. Another neighbour sustained leg injuries whilst trying to avoid a vehicle and trailer overhanging the pavement in South Grove. This lady is now almost wheelchair-bound, and her carer struggles to navigate safe routes to and from town, avoiding vehicles obstructing footpaths and drop curbs. One resident has been subjected to verbal abuse on several occasions when he asked drivers to move their vehicle so he could exit his driveway. Another elderly resident was physically attacked when he spoke to the driver of a vehicle who had parked across the pavement into the front hedge of his property. This incident was not reported to the police for fear of repercussions. I would like to introduce you to another South Grove resident, Mr Earl Crook, to give his account from the perspective of having a severe impairment. Earl?
Madam Chair, councillors, committee members and observers. As Helen has indicated, my name is Earl Crook. I'm a resident of South Grove. And I came to Leamington seven years ago, having left Westminster because I have. I'm registered with the RNIB as severely sight impaired. And working in London, my eyesight was being impacted severely by the pollution. I came down to the coast to get away from that and to avoid the obstacles of city life. We rented in the area that we now reside. And I wandered into the South Grove after the Travis Perkins developments had taken place. And I could wander freely down that road without obstacles. And over time, as Helen has indicated, this has changed and evolved to the attraction of people like myself and local wheelchair users, pushchair. Vehicles overhang the curb. And if there is growth in the area, I either have to avoid the growth and bump into the vehicle or step into the road. I have recently had a situation where cars parked on the curb have forced me into the road, and the speeding vehicle came down the road, turned around, and came back again at speed. Now, I couldn't get their details, but that's the sort of thing you have to deal with. I get to the top of the road, and in terms of accessibility, the sightlines around the corner have now been extended, with double-yellow lines being where they should be. And you can now see further down the road and have clearer paths to get across into town. The drop curb is also an issue because other parts of town have drop curbs which are properly delineated. And we didn't have the same thing, and it's something I'm not clear about. So I appreciate the time that you've taken to listen to this deputation and would urge your support. What I do not want to happen is that I become a statistic, which is essentially avoidable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you, Earl. As we understand, the local authorities have a statutory duty under Section 39 of the 1988 Road Traffic Act to take steps both to reduce and prevent accidents. The current Hampshire County Council traffic management policy and guidance states that potential traffic management measures will be considered if they meet at least one of the following criteria. One, improve the safety of all road users, changes that help achieve reduction in casualties or reduce the potential for injury. Two, keep traffic moving by resolving congestion and parking obstruction issues. Three, address communities' concerns about traffic-related issues that have an adverse impact on the quality of life for local residents. All three criteria apply to South Grove and the Grove Road area. In January 2022, after further discussions with councillor Dunning and the Hampshire parking team, it was agreed that the civil enforcement officers be permitted to issue advisory tickets in the hope it would dissuade vehicles parking on the footway causing obstruction. Initially, this did deter some drivers, but it was subject to the CEOs being in the area at that time, as their resources were and still are limited. The fact that tickets were only advisory meant the drivers repeated their contravention. In August 2022, we met briefly with councillor Adams King and brought to his attention our road safety and accessibility concerns. He assured us that the issues would be investigated and options to resolve be determined. The executive lead member indicated there should be a resolution from the town council to indicate their support for the principle of introducing parking restrictions. He also made it clear that the process should begin with an assessment by the area by a traffic engineer. In response, the town council unanimously approved a resolution in February 2023. It listed a number of specific points where they believed the introduction of parking restrictions would improve safety for all. They formally requested that Hampshire County Council provide highways engineering team to assess and cost the proposals, and the town council committed funds from their Sills budget towards this assessment. Five months on, despite numerous follow-up emails and phone calls, Hampshire County Council have yet to agree a date for engineering team to appraise the areas of concern. As you will appreciate, local residents and Leamington and Pennington Town Council are becoming extremely frustrated by this process. Over four years, we have had various meetings, discussions with community police, Hampshire Fire Safety Department, New Forest District Council, site visits with the local town councillors, and it is nearly a year since we briefly met with councillor Adams last August. We have followed the recommendations of the executive lead member, and Leamington and Pennington Town Council have made the formal application. Madam Chairman, when will Hampshire County Council take our road safety and accessibility issues seriously? When will Hampshire County Council take even the first step of scheduling a highways engineering team to appraise and cost the specific safety issues detailed in the town council resolution? To reiterate Mr Crook's point, we do not want to add to your casualty-led data before there is action to address these problems. Thank you.
Can I say a thank you to both Helen and Earl for your deputation this morning? We do take the deputation seriously. You may know, already know, that it isn't customary to give a response in full council, but I can assure you that you have raised some quite valid points this morning, and I can assure you that you will receive a detailed response from the executive member with responsibility, as you've outlined this morning. So thank you both very much indeed for coming. We value your contribution.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, we're going to leave now? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second deputation is from Zoe. Zoe Hanem, who is going to talk this morning about road safety at Helios Park in Farnborough. Good morning, Zoe, and welcome to the chamber.
Morning, Madam Chairman, thank you, and morning to councillors. As I said, Madam Chairman said, I'm Zoe Hanem. I'm resident at Helios Park Housing Development. So thank you for giving me some time today and continuing the theme of road safety that Helen mentioned. I want to raise your awareness of the dangerous access to and from the new development, Helios Park, where my family and I moved to a new house in 2019. The development completed last year following a delay due to the Covid pandemic. Helios Park is a 303-unit housing development which is sited to the north of the M3, towards London at the junction of the A327 and M3, and has its only access directly from that roundabout junction. You've all been sent a copy of the photograph of the roundabout to just give you the context. So there are four approaches or entry arms to the roundabout, one from Helios Park, one from motorway slip road, junction 43 M3 London, one from the A327 Mini Road from the direction of Blackwater, and one from the A327 Bridge, which brings vehicles over the M3 from Farnborough and M3 South. Since traffic has normalised after the pandemic, access and exit to the roundabout is becoming increasingly risky and at times dangerous. This is largely due to the speed of cars approaching the roundabout with the intention of joining the motorway. The speed limit is 50 miles an hour on all the approaches, except that from Helios Park, which is subject to the normal 30 mile an hour you'd expect in a built-up area. The Design Manual for Road and Bridges, which I've spent a long time reading recently, is used to govern the design for roundabouts and states that each approach should have sufficient deflection or curve to decelerate cars and allow access to the roundabout from all entries. Just to say what the manual states, the deflection is the most important determinant of safety at roundabouts, because it governs the speed of vehicles through the junction and whether drivers are likely to give way to circulating vehicles. This is not the case at this roundabout. The manual also states there should be submission notice to the roundabout to drivers on the approach, either via road markings or signage. There is no signage on the approach from the A327 Mini Road, which is a long, straight road with a current speed limit of 50 miles an hour, and only a minor deflection has been designed into that road. As a consequence, there have been numerous near misses as residents attempt to enter the housing development or leaving the development, which is extremely difficult, not only due to the speed of vehicles entering the roundabout as they circulate, but also due to very high volumes of traffic for long periods at rush hour in the mornings and evenings. I myself have experienced near misses on numerous occasions when driving around the roundabout as vehicles speed from the bridge and from both arms of the A327. This week, I posted a question on our Facebook page and asked residents their views. Here are some examples of the many comments that I've received from our residents. "I agree with everyone that entering the estate from the bridge is horrible. We have people pull out on us almost every time, even though we are indicating off the roundabout. It's a nightmare trying to get into the estate at busy times. I've had lots of near misses." "The amount of time cars from Mini have nearly hit us is shocking." So this is just a small number of the comments I've received on the Facebook page. So my asks are: please carry out a traffic survey at the rush hour times to better understand the problem I've described to you. Please can highway engineers devise a means of reducing speed at the roundabout junction, particularly on the eastbound carriageway of the A327, either through redesign or remedial treatment? In the meantime, I have some further small asks. Please reduce the speed limit on each approach from 50 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. I think you'd all agree that that is the norm for busy approaches to roundabouts, not 50 miles an hour. Please improve and introduce road markings and signage on all the approaches to flag up to drivers they are approaching a roundabout and to slow down." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much indeed for that, Zoe. The executive member relevant to this particular deputation is unable to be present this morning, so I'm going to ask the leader if he wishes to respond.
Madam Chairman, thank you, and I just want to thank Zoe for her deputation. And I assure you, I will discuss that with the relevant members and with the relevant officers as well, so thank you.
So I'd like to thank you very much indeed for attending. I know that sometimes these things can be daunting for members of the public, but we do appreciate you attending and the contribution you've made this morning, Zoe. Members, our third deputation is to be made by Venetia Rowland, who I believe is going to speak to us now about the Hampshire Minerals and Waste Plan. Good morning, Venetia, and again a gentle reminder to watch the clock because you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. The Localism Act 2011 was introduced as planning did not give members of the public enough influence over decisions that made a big difference to their lives. Too often, power was exercised by people who were not directly affected by the decisions they were taking. This meant understandably that people often resented what they saw as decisions and plans being foisted on them. The Act was meant to place significantly more influence in the hands of local people over issues that made a big difference to their lives. These were not my words, but the plain English guide to the Localism Act, November 2011, from the then Department of Communities and Local Government. The revised partial update plan timetable is not clear about the Regulation 19 Public Consultation. And with the consultation summary being published this May, it would be helpful for residents to know exactly when the next stage of consultation is to be published. In the report to Cabinet advised the current delay to planned preparations has occurred during the decision to extend the Regulation 18 consultation from six weeks to 12 weeks. To clarify, it was not necessarily the additional six weeks added to the consultation period that raised the current delay, but as outlined previously, on the 21st of July 2022, the timetable was already delayed. And quoting from an email on the 15th November 2022 from the Development Management and Minerals and Waste Policy Team, "Unfortunately, the mineral and waste teams had very high and unexpected illness levels in recent weeks." unfortunately, the mineral and waste teams had very high and unexpected illness levels in recent weeks. Given that, we would request an extended Regulation 19 consultation period due to the complexity of the partial plan update documents and in line with the gunning principles. The real need for land one sharp sand and gravel, SSG, should be in the region of 5% of the current forecast for the period up to 2040, not the 15% as stated in the partial plan update. This means that less than one-third of the sites are potentially required, and as the need forecast has been continuously overestimated in the last 30 years, then that 5% could be reduced even further. Between 2001 and 2010, there was a reduction of 26% in the use of recycled and secondary aggregate production, and between 2012 and 2020, there was a further reduction of 39%. This is in a time when recycling should be encouraged and increased, not decreased. Add to this that SSG would be extracted from valuable and productive agricultural land if certain sites were allocated is contrary to food security as advocated by our current Prime Minister. Farm to fork, is it not? Now to the consultation results. The first public drop-in exhibition was held at Fording Bridge, not Oldahold, where certain sites would have a significant impact, and only communicated to relevant town and parish councils on the afternoon of the 4th of November for the evening of the 10th of November, not giving enough time for a wider promotion by the councils and just 25 people able to attend. However, the summary of the number of objections shows Hammer Warren Quarry raised 95 objections. This site, which was granted permission in 1992, has had numerous extensions of the planning permission over some 30-plus years, all of which were inert waste. This has now been changed to hazardous waste, including asbestos. Copley Wood raised 127 objections. This site was subject of a planning application in 1992. At the time, New Forest District Council raises the strongest possible objection to this application and backs the concerns expressed by local residents and amenity societies. This was then withdrawn by the applicant in 1994 and has not been included in the 2013 plan nor the 2018 review. Midham Farm raised 962 objections. This site was subject of a planning application in 1992, which was withdrawn by the applicant due to the officer's report dated 12th of June 1995, which recommended refusal citing amongst a vast number of reasons severely impacting on the amenity of these people, meaning local residents. This site was not included in the 2013 plan nor in the 2018 review. This is also one of the sites that the partial update found is likely to have a significant effect on an international site. Five international sites were flagged as potentially implicated, and the international sites of the River Avon of most relevance. It is reasonable to expect the hydrology impacts caused by de-watering of the mineral extraction will have an adverse effect on the integrity of the River Avon, such that the allocation is not deliverable. In the absence of information to the contrary, the partial update cannot be considered sound because significant uncertainty exists in the relation to its deliverability and therefore its effectiveness. The River Avon SSSI complex is also of national importance and stands to be affected in the same way as the international nature conservation sites of the Avon. This is not consistent with the NPPF and Policy 3, which state that nationally important sites must be protected in accordance with their relative importance. The objections submitted included the Right Honourable Sir Desmond Swain, MP for New Forest West, Simon Hoare, MP for North Dorset, Fording Bridge Town Council, Oldahold, Godshill, and Ellingham, Ivesley and Harbridge Parish councils, CPRE, Dorset County Council, New Forest District Council, Harbridge Protection Society, and of course, residents. Significant comments were also provided by Hampshire Countryside and Historic Environment, with many of the proposed sites giving guidelines on extraction timeframes which are merely placeholders as the SSG is only extracted when financially advantageous to the operator, and with extensions of permission being waved through for decades, as we've experienced with Hammer Warren, Bleak Hill. This leaves us as residents as hostages in our own homes solely for the financial gain of the operators. Therefore, we would strongly urge councillors and officers to take heed of the views of the community that you consulted and remove Midham Farm, Copley Wood and Hammer Warren hazardous waste from the next stage of the partial update. Thank you.
Thank you, Venetia, for that, and also thank you for keeping within the time slot. Thank you. I know it's not easy. I'm going to ask the leader to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Venetia, thank you for your deputation again. I've listened very carefully because it falls under my remit and the deputy leader, and all members, I'm sure, have listened very carefully today as well because it is a paper on the agenda today. So thank you for your deputation.
Right, members, we now proceed with the remainder of the agenda. We are on item five, which is chairman's announcements. Well, I'm very pleased to be able to start my announcements today with some accolades and awards that have recently been granted to Hampshire County Council staff. I'm going to start off with children's services. Hannah West, a careers adviser with the County Council's Hampshire Futures Service, which is part of the Children's Services Directorate, has been named the Public Sector Careers Advisor of the Year in the UK Careers Development Award, so it's a national award. The awards are hosted by the Career Development Institute, and they recognise the dedication, innovation, and passion of professionals working in the career development sector. Hannah has worked as a Careers and Employability Advisor for Hampshire Futures since 2019, and works in mainstream settings as well as settings where young people have complex barriers to engagement in careers activities. She was given the award in recognition of her work to help young people and adults progress in their careers, and was also shortlisted for the Careers Programme Post-16 Education Award. Well done to Hannah on this excellent achievement and for all that she does to help local people fulfil their potential. I'm going on now to mention awards from Universal Services. I am pleased to report that our highways team were recently commended in the decarbonation category at the prestigious National Chartered Institute of Highways and Transportation Awards. They're known as the CHIT, which was held in London on the 16th of June for their ongoing innovative work at the Highways Material Recycling Centre at Mishel Diva. This is a tremendous achievement and demonstrates that Hampshire remains at the forefront of developing reprocessed low-carbon road repair materials that minimise waste and reduce costs. And I am delighted that this has been recognised by the CIHT judging panel. Sir Harold Hillier Gardens has also won awards. They had two exhibits at the Royal Horticultural Show Hampton Court and were awarded a Silver Guilt and a Silver Medal. The Silver Guilt Medal was for the Retreat Garden, what they call a mindful garden, inspired by the collection of Sir Harold Hillier. Now, this garden, I understand, is designed to promote relaxation and wellbeing. The sympathetic planting provided areas for rest and contemplation, such as a reflecting pool of the pond and the seating area. And the garden was designed by members of the Horticultural Team at Sir Harold Hillier Gardens, aided by colleagues. The Silver Medal was for the exhibit based on the National Plant Collection for plants raised and named by Hilliers. And they can be found in the Centenary Border at the Sir Hillary, sorry, beg your pardon, at the Sir Harold Hillier Gardens. Apparently, this garden includes an exciting new cultivar named Lavendula and something which is called Orange Pumpkin, but please don't ask me what it is because I haven't seen it and I don't know. This garden was project managed by horticultural students who are participating in the garden's 2023 student programme. So I should like to congratulate the whole team at Sir Harold Hillier Gardens, and in particular Barry Clark, botanist and student coordinator, for an excellent result at such a prestigious event. But it doesn't stop there, members. Dan Randall in Property Services recently passed his Royal Institute of Chartered Surveyors Assessment of Professional Confidence and is now a chartered surveyor after graduating from Portsmouth University with a First Class Honours Degree. I have to remind people that a First Class Honours Degree is never granted lightly. Dan commenced his building-stroke surveying apprenticeship with Hampshire County Council in 2017. So to achieve chartered status in this timeframe is a fantastic achievement and a great testament to his personal commitment. And I should like to support the leadership that Dan has received from the wider team. Another property services building surveying degree apprentice graduated from Portsmouth University this summer. Sam Winterbone has also obtained a First Class Honours Degree. These are exceptional students. And again, this is testament to his personal commitment and the support of his team. Sam is the sixth Hampshire County Council Property Services Building Surveying Apprentice to graduate since 2021. Three more are commencing their third year, with five more apprentices starting their educational journey and careers with Hampshire this autumn. And I would have to add that Dan and Sam have set the bar very high for others who follow. Adult Health and Care held their Making a Difference Awards when 35 staff received recognition of qualifications and celebrated both nominees and winners in eight different award categories. The Manager of the Year was Bill Dietz from Malsbury Lawn, which is, as you know, a Hampshire County Council-run care home. And Excellence in Dementia Care Award was granted to Malsbury Lawn team, and many congratulations to you. Members, I'm sure you will agree with me when I extend congratulations to everyone who has received an award. You know, and I know, that these things are never achieved without a lot of hard work and determination. So many congratulations. Now, since taking office as chairman last May, my diary has been very full, as you can imagine, too full for me to recall all events in detail. But my tenure of office started with a royal visit. On the 1st of June, and in the presence of Her Royal Highness the Princess Royal, Princess Anne, I attended the Royal Logistics Corps Freedom Parade in Winchester. Of course, as you would expect, everything went like clockwork. And despite a very cold wind, the Princess Royal took her time to inspect and talk with many members of the corps. And the parade was followed by a service of Thanksgiving at Winchester Cathedral. I especially want to mention my visit to the Hampshire County Scouts Annual General Meeting and Annual Review, which was held at Farnycroft's Activity Centre Brockenhurst. Not only was I immeasurably impressed by the wide range of activities they undertook, I was challenged, and I'll let you guess whether or not I took up the challenge, of rock wall climbing
Without a doubt, Madam Chair.
in a skirt, archery, sailing, environmental projects and community work, et cetera. It was very evident that the organisation and its superb volunteers are able to install confidence and competence in these young people. But of particular note and interest to members here today in this chamber is the fact that the Scout Team Award went to Gosport. The Adventure Scout Award went to Eastleigh. The Local Hero Award went to a member of Brams Hill Scout Group, which is in North Hampshire. And two leadership awards went to Brams Hill and Waterlooville Scouts. The prestigious Scout of the Year Award went to a young, I might add, a very young man from Totten, from the Nestle Marsh Scouts. Furthermore, I must compliment members of the Basingstow Scout Gang Show as they sang a welcome song to the VIPs. The song was called Only One Call Away, which they sign languished as they sang, and they did it flawlessly. Not one of them made a mistake or got it wrong. It was quite incredible. The song Only One Call Away is a song about reassuring young people that help of whatever kind is only one phone call away when you're in the scouting movement. So, members, if you haven't already done so, I do urge you to make contact with your local scouting group because they are doing a superb job for the young people. I confess I took a short stroll down memory lane when on the 9th of July I attended the Hampshire County Youth Bands Concert at Oakland Sixth Form School in Waterlooville, because, as I told you last time, that was my first teaching post at that school. The standard of performance was absolutely superb, and soon they are heading off on their European tour. Times have changed since I visited school. They do a lot more exciting things now. I'm delighted. So I do seriously urge every member in this chamber to attend one or more of their concerts to support their young people, who are all incredibly talented. And my final announcement is a rather sad one. Members, I wish to report the passing of Mohammed Masadak, affectionately known as Moss, who died suddenly of a short illness. Moss was an equality and inclusion manager at Hampshire County Council before his retirement and who did prominent work in the community, especially in Eastleigh. Moss's invaluable contributions to local government were recognised in 2011 when he received an OBE in the Queen's New Year's Honour List. In 2002, Moss played a pivotal role in establishing the Asian Welfare and Cultural Association, the AWCA, where he remained an active member trustee and advisor from its inception. One of his notable achievements was the envisaging of Eastleigh Mela, which began as a modest festival in 2006, but has now evolved into a highly anticipated annual event, drawing thousands of attendees from across the borough and beyond. Now, you're probably wondering to yourself, as I did, what does that mean? What does the word mela mean? I don't know. So like a true ex-teacher lecturer, I did my homework. And I've discovered that mela is the Sangrit word for meeting or fair or gathering or celebrations. So your next question to me was, well, what's a Sangrit? A Sangrit is an ancient and classical language of India. So there you have it. Moss also initiated the Diversity and Inclusion Award in 2014, and this prestigious accolade aims to acknowledge and honour individuals, businesses and organisations that have made significant contributions to promoting accessibility, inclusion and community participation. He also dedicated his time and expertise as trustee for the Eastleigh Gurkha and Nepalese Association, the EGNA, and provided unwavering support to the organisation throughout the years. Despite his recent relocation to Yorkshire to be closer to his family, Moss remained actively involved with the AWCA, as well as the organisation of the Mela and the Eastleigh Nepalese and Gurkha Association. And last month, he was rightly recognised as an Eastleigh Citizen of Honour, but unfortunately, his health prevented him from collecting it. I understand that a funeral service has already been held for Moss in his hometown of Bradford. in his hometown of Bradford, commemorating his remarkable life and his legacy. And I'm sure you will all join with me, members, in sending our condolences but also our best wishes to Moss and his family. So thank you for listening to my rather long, but I could have made it longer, chairman's announcements. Thank you. Item six on the agenda is the Leader's Report. So I'd like to invite the leader now to present his report.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. And as you can see by the thickness of my file, I thought your report was relatively short, Madam Chairman. Although it is large print, you'll be pleased to hear. Madam Chairman, thank you. I'd like to start my report by confirming that I've sent the letters requested and the resolutions passed by County Council on the eighteenth of May. The letters concerned eligibility and funding for free school meals and amendments of the Code of Conduct legislation. I should keep members updated on the responses I receive from government and MPs. I can also confirm that the Director of Children's Services has sent a communication to all schools reminding them of the updated non-structural school uniform guidance to help schools develop and implement their school uniform policy. The first key point highlighted is the need for schools to keep their uniform policy affordable. I'd like to thank all the members that presented those on the day, Madam Chairman, at the last council meeting. And as I said, we will keep them updated. You've seen a lot recently and notes gone out from me on county deals. So I think I will just give you an update on that. From the outset of the National Devolution Programme, the County Council has been clear that we want to secure the best possible deal for residents and communities across Pan-Hampshire. Potential new funding of 1.14 billion, along with extra powers and investment, would bring significant benefits to our region in line with what other parts of England have already received. Over many months, the County Council has worked together with all councils and wider stakeholders throughout Pan-Hampshire to jointly shape our proposals for devolution. Since receiving our county deal prospectus at the end of last year, the Levelling Up Minister and government officials have responded extremely positively to our shared ambition. However, the leaders of the three unitary councils of Southampton, Portsmouth and the Isle of Wight have also written to the minister requesting a separate two-deal solution. One for the unitary councils and one for the county area. But government have been consistently clear that there is only a single wider Pan-Hampshire deal open for discussion. And the offer to meet with the minister to progress discussions on a deal has now been rejected by the leaders of the unitary authorities. Given the current position of the unitary authorities, it is therefore highly unlikely a devolution deal can be realistically taken forward for our area. Clearly, this is extremely disappointing. No more so than the potential lost opportunity for our residents and future generations and putting our area on the map for additional powers, funding and investment, both now and in the years ahead. However, despite the disappointment, we shall continue to work constructively and meaningfully with all our local and wider regional partners in the interest, excuse me, of our residents. Precisely the opportunity we intended to strengthen through a county deal arrangement. Moving on to several other matters and the budget consultation. I would like to remind everyone that the County Council's budget consultation closes on Sunday. Years of underfunding by central government, along with inflation, rising costs and rising demand for vital services like social care and putting pressure on the budgets of councils across the country. Although there is less money available and costs are rising, councils are required by law to deliver a balanced budget for the start of each financial year. That's why the County Council has some very difficult decisions to make in the coming months about our future spending to deliver local services up to April 2025. It is important that Hampshire residents have their say on the impact of the changes we are proposing in the budget consultation. Based on consultation responses submitted to date, we are particularly looking to increase feedback from district areas, including Rushmore, Hart, Havant, Gosport and Basingstow and Dean. I strongly encourage residents and stakeholders across Hampshire, but especially in those five areas, to go online and respond to our budget consultation before the Sunday's deadline. In the meantime, the deputy leader and I are continuing to engage actively with government ministers and Hampshire MPs on the financial pressures faced by local authorities and how they can work with us to support the continued delivery of quality public services for Hampshire residents in the short term and long term. Just some notes on adult social care. So on Tuesday, Cabinet approved the opening of a formal public consultation on the County Council's proposals to invest £173 million in transforming nursing and specialist care accommodation in Hampshire over the next five to six years. Hampshire is one of a handful of county councils nationally to run our own network of care homes. However, as I spoke about earlier, Hampshire and county councils across the country are facing exceptional cost pressures in social care services. We now face difficult choices on where to focus our finite resources. This is an issue of not just how we support vulnerable residents in the short term, but how we continue to deliver the right services in the decades that are to come. Our adult social care service is proposing to concentrate on the delivery of specialist nursing care, complex dementia care and short-term support. To either prevent a hospital admission or support a hospital discharge that would not only meet the needs of a growing number of older people in Hampshire in the longer term, but would be care that would be provided most cost-effectively in-house. I know the proposals would have personal implications for many. So I strongly encourage care home residents, their families, staff and Hampshire residents and organisations to respond to the consultation when it opens at the start of September. The consultation will run for ten weeks and the findings will be considered by the Health and Adult Social Care Select Committee in January 2024, prior to any formal decisions being taken place. We've spoken a little bit about roads funding in the past, but as to sort of add to that, and we're all too aware of the challenging winds of prolonged wet and freezing weather, along with many years of insufficient national funding for highway maintenance, have taken their toll on local road network in Hampshire and indeed throughout the UK. This is a national crisis, which I and the leaders of other South East councils are urging the Prime Minister to address. In the meantime, Hampshire's highways teams are continuing to do an excellent job of repairing potholes and other road defects to keep our network in a safe and serviceable condition using the limited resources that they have. Hampshire is one of England's largest counties with over 5,000 miles of roads, with widespread damage still evident and the need for structural repairs remain high. It is clear there is no quick fix to this longstanding issue. But the Cabinet, on Tuesday, we agreed a proposal to use our reserves to deliver a £22.5 million three-year programme to enable more localised road repairs across Hampshire. And to be clear, this is additional funding that will facilitate extra operational resources so that road defects can be addressed more quickly utilising new innovative repair treatments and processes. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage residents to keep using the County Council's online system to report potholes so that they can be logged by the team and scheduled to repair as soon as possible. And a lot of activities, and the chairman mentioned also, about our armed forces. And Hampshire is home to one of the largest armed forces and veteran communities in the UK. And the County Council has always taken our duty to the needs of those communities very seriously. Last month, Cabinet was pleased to continue our commitment and active support for the armed forces by agreeing to sign the updated Armed Forces Covenant at a formal ceremony later this year. Recently, I had the honour of representing the County Council at events to thank and commemorate the armed forces for their services in the United Kingdom. As I mentioned earlier, Chairman, along with the chairman, I attended a reception in Winchester to mark the thirtieth anniversary of the Royal Logistics Corps, which is based in Worthy Down. I had the honour of meeting Her Royal Highness the Princess Royal, who took part in the day's events in her capacity as Colonel-in-Chief of the Royal Logistics Corps. I also had the pleasure of taking part in the Gurkha Day event at St Harold Helyia Gardens. This event was a commemoration of the importance of historic relationship between the people of Hampshire and the poor. I was proud to lay a wreath on behalf of the people of Hampshire to thank and honour Gurkha soldiers who served in the British Army with great distinction. I was also pleased to commemorate the seventy-ninth anniversary of D-Day by laying a wreath at Leek Park, which was a key site in Hampshire for the D-Day departures. I was honoured and genuinely moved to meet a few elderly veterans, including a ninety-nine-year-old gentleman who made an enormous effort to stand and salute when the National Anthem was played. It was a very emotional time, actually. The three events were fantastic tributes to the special relationship between Hampshire and the military. I would like to thank each of those organisations for making them such a success. A little bit more about our member champions. Hampshire County Council's solidarity with the people of Ukraine during the conflict in their country remains constant. We are working in partnership with other local authorities and community organisations to ensure the Homes Ukraine scheme can label many Ukrainian families to settle safely and swiftly into life here in Hampshire. And I will just add, I attended a really good event with councillor Todd at the Winchester College yesterday when they were putting on a celebration event for hosts as well. It was a really fantastic event. And they played a video of a young Ukrainian lady. And that was very emotional as well about what she had gone through to that process. But the encouragement they were getting from the hosts and the families as well. Though thank you to Winchester for that. To champion organisations who support Ukraine guests and Hampshire hosts and continue to raise awareness of the scheme, I am very, very pleased to announce that councillor Rod Cooper will become our member champion for the Homes for Ukraine scheme. And I thank councillor Cooper for the work he's done and will be doing that and meeting those other organisations within that and through those other districts and borough councils as well. So thank you, councillor Cooper. And I'd like to thank councillor Cooper and all our member champions for the dedication, knowledge and enthusiasm they bring to their roles. I look forward continuing to work with them in the coming months and beyond. I'm also very pleased that this is the third summer where the County Council has been delivering the Holidays Activity and Food Scheme. This is a free, government-funded programme of healthy food and activities over the summer holiday for children from reception to year eleven who receive income-based free school meals during term time. A small number of places are also available for other vulnerable families. Demand for places can be high in some areas. So I encourage parents to check online for all local venues delivering the holiday activities and food scheme and add their names to the waiting lists to make the most of any cancellations. Attended recently the Education Awards, and what a brilliant event that was. And I'm absolutely delighted to attend the wars last month to recognise the hard work and dedication of teachers, support staff, volunteers and governors across Hampshire. It was a special evening, hearing the inspiring stories of education staff who go above and beyond to support Hampshire's childrens and young people achieve their potential. I was especially pleased to see Brian Pope given a special recognition award after thirty years working Hampshire's working Hampshire primary and secondary schools and eight years at the County Council's Assistant Director of Education and Inclusion until his retirement earlier this year. Thank you to all our teachers, support staff, volunteers and governors for the work they do in Hampshire schools and colleges to educate and support our children and young people. Many of you will be aware that the NHS marked seventy-five years of service earlier this month. From its official launch on the fifth of July, 1948, the NHS have developed through various changes and challenges, including COVID-19, to become the organisation that it is today. Employing over one and a half million people, it is the largest non-military public organisation in the world and has its value placed at the heart of our society. Throughout history, the NHS has worked closely with local government. On the occasion of its seventy-fifth anniversary, I would like to thank the many thousands of individuals in all roles and locations who have given their commitment, dedication and energy to providing for the healthcare needs of the Hampshire population. Volunteers Week, I mean Volunteers Week took place last month. And I would like to say a huge thank you and a heartfelt thank you to the thousands of people in Hampshire who have given their time, energy and commitment to volunteering in local communities and helping organisations such as schools and the NHS. Their extraordinary generosity and dedication make a huge difference to the lives of people and places across Hampshire. The County Council worked with local voluntary groups to recruit volunteers. For anyone who is interested in finding out what sorts of volunteering opportunities are available, please do have a look on our website. Finally, I hope everyone had a happy Hampshire Day on Saturday. Our County Day, which takes place on the fifteenth of July on St Swiddens Day as a patron saint of Winchester Cathedral, is an annual opportunity to celebrate everything that makes Hampshire a great place to live, work, play and visit. I hope you paid attention to that. If you think my leader's report has been long so far, Madam Chairman, I heard a yes then. Who said that? Stand up. Is that you, Marge? Name check. Just wait until I start talking about everything that has made Hampshire a great place to... Come on, say that. Tough audience, Chairman. That has made Hampshire a great place to live, work and play. Since my family have moved here some four hundred and sixty years ago. Now I'm going to start report on the last four hundred and sixty years my family have been there. I am just going to mention a few things. There's about the Food Festival, which I think we should. So firstly, the award-winning Hampshire Food Festival is showcasing the very best of Hampshire's food and drink producers in events across our county in July and August. I encourage residents to find out what tastings and workshops are taking place in their area and go along to support Hampshire's brilliant local farmers and independent food and drink businesses. Just the last thing, if you're on the country parks. I'm delighted that Hampshire's five country parks have all once again regained green flag status in recognition of their excellent facilities and quality maintenance. I congratulate and thank the officers and volunteers who support our country parks for making them a beautiful green spaces that everyone can enjoy, especially as a summer holiday is about to start. And just quickly, Hampshire Business Awards. I was very pleased to announce the launch of the first ever Hampshire Business Awards a few weeks ago to champion and recognise the achievements of our county's fantastic businesses in the community. Nominations for the awards are open until the 15th of September, including the Made in Hampshire Award category, which Hampshire County Council is very pleased to sponsor. Shortlisted individuals and businesses will be invited to the award ceremony at Farborough International Exhibition Centre and Conference Centre, sorry, on the 30th of November. That's two days after my birthday, if anybody's interested, just to note that. So that makes my birthday on the, Deputy Leader, 28th of November, thank you very much, just clear. I invite all businesses in Hampshire and the Isle of Wight to have a look at Hampshire Business Awards website and see if they are eligible to apply for an award on the 15th of September deadline. But the last page is blank, not unlike the most of the faces in the chamber, I don't know, like that. And chairman, that's the end of my brief report, thank you very much. I've got a chair there, Madam Chairman, I don't know.
Well, there was almost a chair. I'm not sure whether it was for the content or the fact that it finished.
I'm sure that I never come back to haunt you, Madam Chairman.
But thank you very much indeed for a very, very interesting report. We obviously must proceed with the item on the agenda today. So our next item is Item 7, which is Questions Understanding Order. A reminder to all members who are putting questions that there is a total of 30 minutes to deal with all questions. And the first question is from councillor Jackie Branson. And she's putting her question to councillor Steve Forster, the Executive Member for Education. Councillor Branson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There has recently been an increase in children with EHCPs, that's Education Health and Care Plans, and SEND, Special Education Needs and Disabilities, as well as children dealing with the after-effects of the Covid shutdown. What steps are being taken to ensure the education and emotional needs of these children are being met in Hampshire schools?
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Branson. Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you councillor Branson for your question. I was going to say this will be a long answer, but compared to some of the previous, it's probably quite a short one. Hampshire schools have a variety of initiatives available to them to support children with special education needs and children's emotional needs. Some of those were recognised, as the leader suggested earlier on, in the Education Awards. All primary schools can access their local primary behaviour service to access training and support for the assessment and identification of a pupil's individual needs relating to behaviour and emotional wellbeing. PBS provides services that support classroom staff, school leadership teams and parents and carers. PBS also support, sorry, also offer the Wellbeing Support Service, which is funded by Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service, CAMHS. So referrals come through the School Nursing Service, all from their own GPs. This provides much-needed early targeted support through a child-centred approach for parents of children and young people with social, emotional and mental health SEM needs. The NHS CAMHS service have set up mental health support teams across Hampshire to support primary, secondary, as well as post-16 students. They're currently operating in nine Hampshire areas with a further two more in pipeline. We hope to see those very soon. A number of schools have Emotional Literary Support Assistance, ELSAs. Sorry, there's so many acronyms in education, I found, who provide additional wellbeing support for children within their schools. The Hampshire Virtual School offers trauma-informed training and supports the designated teacher, which is a statutory role in each school. Lastly, the Hampshire Inspection and Advisory Service runs a range of training courses for schools to support children and better meet their needs. A school improvement manager for each district also devises projects which are specific for the context of each school.
Thank you councillor Forster. Councillor Branson, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Madam Chairman. Many of these children are now choosing to be educated in mainstream schools. Some schools that have a good reputation of supporting these children are now known as magnet schools and attract a high proportion of these children. That includes the school that I'm a chairman of governors, where they expect to have over 60 EHCPs and perhaps more in the pipeline. What is Hampshire doing to ensure these schools have the budget, facilities and staff to support with these ever-increasing numbers of children with special needs?
Councillor Forster.
Thank you and thank you for the supplementary. EHCPs come with additional funding. So each child within the EHCP does bring additional money into the school. And budget is really vital for education on the whole. If it's not enough to meet the needs of the child, the school can apply for extra funding from the SEND service so that those specific needs can be met. Schools are responsible for their own staffing and budgets. But our SEND service, the Hampshire County Council SEND service, is here to support them and provide advice as needed. We do give extensive and comprehensive training for the teachers, leaders and the governors, because they're all part of this, and as part of our training offers. And we also give bespoke support where that's needed. The DFE, Department for Education, Delivering Better Value Programme, has allowed us to successfully bid for extra funding that has allowed us to provide a SEND toolkit and a support line and a range of pilot opportunities specifically aimed at helping mainstream schools to meet the needs of those children with special education needs. This launches in the autumn term this year with conferences for all Hampshire schools, not just for the teaching staff, but also for the governors. And I think it's worth stressing how important the role of governor is to every single school and to Hampshire as a whole.
Thank you very much councillor Forster for that response. And we're going on to question two now, which is from councillor Stephen Reed to the leader. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As a 50% leasehold partner in the many down land, is Hampshire County Council aware of or party to any negotiations, discussions or information that could see the development of many down change from the scheme that has been through the planning process following comprehensive public consultation?
Thank you. Leader, would you like to respond, please?
Madam Chairman, thank you. Yes, I can absolutely assure councillor Reed, no, the County Council is not aware of or party to any discussion referred to in his question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Reed, do you have a supplementary?
Please, yes, then that's good. In the event that significant alterations were to be proposed to lay out or design or mix, changing the current plans from those on which consultation has taken place, will the leader commit to Hampshire using its position to ensure that the residents of Basingstoke are consulted again? I'm sure this council would not wish to see the extensive public engagement that has taken place being overridden without further consultation.
Leader.
Madam Chairman, thank you. Yes, I think obviously this is part for Basingstoke and Dean as the planning authority to go through that process. And indeed, if they make any amendments to the local plan, it would be for them to ensure that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question number three is from councillor Zoe Huggins to councillor Steve Forster, the Executive Member for Education. Councillor Huggins.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Every year, 4,000 children and young people are diagnosed with cancer. Many of those unlucky individuals suffer from worse education outcomes than their peers due to prolonged absence from education and the ongoing effects of treatment. Can the Executive Member of Education state the support and interventions Hampshire County Council schools give to those young people with a cancer diagnosis? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Huggins. Councillor Forster.
Thank you for the question. My heart goes out to anyone diagnosed with cancer and particularly children. County Council has supported nine children with cancer since the start of 2021. In each case, schools work closely with the Children's Services Inclusion Support Team, the relevant hospital and parents, so as to properly support the child. Depending on how much they're able to attend school as they proceed through their treatment, a variety of education support is provided or is offered. The majority of provision is through remote tutoring in a range of subjects decided as part of the child's plan. But there's something that's quite exciting that I add to that. The team also has an AV1 robot, not a particularly exciting name, but it's a phenomenal piece of technology. And it recognises that the children who are being educated remotely aren't involved in what's happening in the school quite as much as if they were physically present. That robot enables the child to access all aspects of school, including assemblies and playtime, as the remote child is able to control the robot so they can see, hear and participate from their home or hospital ward. I think this is phenomenal use of technology. This has been particularly successful in cases where cancer treatment has compromised immunity as the children can participate in school life without fear of infection. And I think it just shows how important and how we are supporting inclusivity.
Thank you very much. Councillor Huggins, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Some fantastic initiatives that you mentioned there, some real innovation. I recognise that education support does exist in the form of Education Health Care Plans, EHCPs, but the application process can take months, reducing the speed of interventions at a critical time. This is especially true for those facing GCSE-level examinations. How can Hampshire County Council ensure that these young people with a cancer diagnosis get immediate and timely interventions? Thank you.
Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for the supplementary. I don't have some of the detailed numbers, but I've got a few facts in front of me. What I would say is there have been delays and the County Council is making major strides in improving the responsiveness. The volume, though, is high and is increasing, over 150, 200 a month, if I remember rightly. It should take 20 weeks, significantly less where possible. Nationally, the statistic that I think stands out is that only just over 50%, 50.7% is achieved nationally, which is indicative of what I would call a send demand crisis. Pleasingly, in Hampshire, we're significantly above that with our response at over 66%, 66.4%, but that's still not good enough. We do recognise, whether it's in cases of cancer or other urgent cases, and more generally, that we need to do much better than we are today and blow the national numbers out the water. We need to increase the percentage and all our officers and all our staff are focused on increasing that percentage. I'll maintain providing updates on what we're doing.
Thank you very much councillor Forster. Question four is from councillor Parker Jones to councillor North, who is the Executive Member for Performance, Human Resources, Communications, Inclusion and Diversity. Councillor Parker Jones.
Thank you. I feel it is wonderful that Hampshire County Council celebrates commitment to public service by recognising those who have completed 25 years' service. However, it seems not all long and committed local authority service is recognised, such as the Oxford Council staff who are TUPED, which is the transfer of undertakings protections of employment rights to Hampshire's IBC, the Integrated Business Centre. Why does Hampshire feel it is appropriate to not treat these staff members in the same manner?
Thank you. Councillor North.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you very much for your question councillor Parker Jones. The Council's Long Service Awards Scheme is a non-contractual scheme. Long Service Awards are issued after 25, 40 and 50 years' employment at Hampshire County Council. The purpose of the scheme is to specifically recognise and reward a member of staff's service whilst working directly at Hampshire County Council. As such, previous employment with other public or private organisations, even where the member of staff is TUPED transferred to the council, is not recognised for the purpose of the scheme. The staff you refer to, who TUPED from Oxfordshire, still work solely on Oxfordshire services to schools as part of a service delivery arrangement we have for Oxfordshire County Council. So they're not undertaking Hampshire County Council work. Many of our staff have continuous service, reaching 25 years, 40 years and beyond across the public sector, for example, working in health, central government or with individual sovereign local authorities. Under TUPED, all contractual terms and conditions such as hours, annual leave and pay remain unchanged and transferred to the new employer. As individuals' continuous service with the previous organisation that they have TUPED from will only be taken into account for statutory and contractual entitlements such as maternity, occupational sick pay and redundancy pay. So whilst we recognise, welcome and celebrate a long career in public service, our Long Service Award Scheme is designed to celebrate the time specifically employed by the County Council providing County Council services. We appreciate that this may be disappointing to those members of staff who have transferred at some point in their career to the council, but for the reasons set out above, any service as part of another organisation is not included for the purpose of this scheme.
Councillor Parker Jones, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, yes, I do, and thank you for that response. I am disappointed to hear that people who did not choose specifically to leave an organisation and join another organisation, but stayed within local service, do not receive the same level of recognition. I appreciate if somebody was to leave an organisation and then join, that would be completely different. Would the council commit to re-looking at this when this was not the fault of where somebody started their career and has since found themselves ending up in?
Councillor North, do you wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm listening carefully to what councillor Parker Jones has to say, but as I say, it is a scheme designed to celebrate long service specifically in Hampshire for Hampshire residents as their work from Hampshire County Council, rather than a scheme which recognises long service as public service as a sector. Thank you.
The fifth question is from councillor Baines to councillor Forster, the Executive Member for Education. Councillor Baines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that only 6% of children in England are privately educated, approximately some 400 of the 700 players on the Hampshire Cricket Academy pathway are from a private school background, what support and encouragement is being given to Hampshire schools so that they can provide and promote more cricketing opportunities for all children? Thank you.
Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you councillor Baines for that question. I think the first thing I'd do to set the scene is that all Hampshire schools promote inclusivity through sport. You specifically asked about cricket, so I've got five areas that I want to focus on briefly and I'll cover those. The first thing is that Hampshire Cricket is delivering projects focusing on driving opportunities, exposure and participation in cricket. Over 22,000 children accessed the Chance to Shine Programme in Hampshire primary schools in 21, 22, and over 200 new community coaches were trained. I don't yet have the 22 figures. Secondly, Hampshire Pathway currently has 900 players, of which around half are state-educated. Third, State Jets allows 32 young people who are under 13 years of age in state schools to progress to the County Pathway winter squads. Fourth, T20 Takeover provides the opportunity to play at the Aegeus Bowl. Over 50 state schools attended in 22, 23. I would say for any members and any members of the public who haven't been to the Aegeus Bowl, please do follow what the leader has talked about, work, live and play in Hampshire. and visit the Aegeus Bowl. Yes, thank you. Barn-Peverill Cricket Programme provides cricket opportunities linked to post-16 education. Currently, there are 30-plus enrolments and around 60 inquiries or so for next year, for September next year. So in summary, the significant support and encouragement being given to all Hampshire schools so that they can promote more cricketing opportunities for all our Hampshire children.
councillor Baines, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, councillor Forster, for your update. The supplementary would be, how many of Hampshire's circa 540 schools currently have an operational cricket club for its pupils of every-year group to join in and compete?
councillor Forster.
I'm not aware of an exact number. I don't think we actually log whether they do have, so I'll ask our officers if they can respond if we actually have that data.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions for this morning. May I congratulate all members who have submitted a question? I noticed that they are all very focused and to the point, and as you can see, it has made a significant difference to the period of time that we're able to get through our question period. So, thank you very much. We now carry on with Part One matters, which are matters for decisions. Item eight on the agenda deals with appointments. You will find the relevant pages on pages 21 and 22 on your mod.gov webpage, and I'd like to invite the chairman to present the report, please. Sorry, the leader, I beg your pardon, the leader to present the report.
I won't say what I was going to. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I should be very short. Always works. Members, you will see at point C in the report that at the time of publication, we were waiting for a nomination from Portsmouth City Council. That nomination has now been received. Therefore, I further propose that councillor Judith Smythe be appointed as the unitary council co-opted substitute employer representative on the pension fund panel and board for the manuscule year of 23, 24. I move the recommendation together with the additional appointment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, leader. Are there any questions? Any debate? Right. Are we agreed then with the recommendation as set out on page? Thank you very much, members. We will proceed to item nine on the agenda, which is the end-of-year financial report, which you will find on pages 23 to 100. And again, I invite the leader to present the report to us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Turning to the outturn position, I'm pleased to be able to report that even during a very difficult year, with inflationary pressures hitting many of our services, we were able to come in slightly under budget, thanks mainly to the early delivery of our SP23 savings programme. And I'd like to thank all the officers and cabinet members for their strong financial stewardship over this difficult year. You only need to look in the press at the number of authorities that are struggling, some of which we know are not too far away. So I'm pleased that we have been able to deliver the position for last year. Having said that, it is important that we try to stay ahead of the financial challenges that we face, and we therefore needed to look at what reserves might be available to secure our financial position up to 25, 26, and to fund a number of urgent priorities. It's not something we wanted to do, but we have no choice if we are to remain solvent over the medium term. The report outlines that we have reprioritised £22.5 million, of which will be used to help fix the road network over the next three years, which I'm sure you will all welcome, and we also need to ensure we are prepared for the switch-off of the analogue lines in 2025, which impacts on a number of our services. So we are investing £5 million in the switch-over to digital alternatives. Chairman, you will see there are a number of recommendations for the council to approve, and I commend these to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, leader. Members, are there any questions? Please indicate if you wish to ask a question. Any debate, members? Oh, right, okay. Right, in that case, I will ask you to turn to page 24, if you've not already done so. There you will find the recommendations listed as A to G. Are you content for us to take them on block? Agreed? Agreed, right, thank you very much. Those are agreed on block. Carrying on now to item 10 on the agenda, the Hampshire Minerals and Waste Plan Development Scheme, you will find on pages 101 to 102, and I'd like to invite the leader to present the report.
Madam Chairman, thank you. The report before you is seeking approval of a further update to the Hampshire's Minerals and Waste Development Scheme timetable. This is to reflect the current progress and to ensure that the delivery of the plan aligns with the proposed plan-making transitional agreements outlined in the recent levelling-up and regeneration bill. I move the recommendation, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, leader. Are there any questions? Is there any debate? No? In that case, I draw your attention, please, to the recommendation on pages 97 and 98. I beg your pardon, that's been amended to 101, pages 101 to 102. I'm just going to keep up with myself now. Right. The recommendation is that the county council approve the revised Hampshire Minerals and Waste Development Scheme, which sets out the timetable and programme for the partial update of the plan, which is to come into effect from July 23. Are you all agreed? Thank you. Item 11 on the agenda, notice of motion. Now, we have two notices this morning. The first one is to be, is a notice on the Gurkha Pension Scheme, I understand, and I understand that the proposer of the motion is councillor Alex Crawford. Yes? Councillor Crawford, do you have a second for your motion?
I believe so. Councillor Andrew Joy.
Is councillor Joy able to confirm that? Thank you very much. Councillor Crawford, would you like to present your motion, bearing in mind that you have a total of five minutes? Yes, would you please read the motion?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I believe members have had the motion circulated to them and have all seen it, so I don't need to read the whole motion. I will simply speak to the motion if I may. It's a privilege to propose this important motion, and I thank councillor Andrew Joy, the council's Armed Forces Champion, for being second. In June 2011, as the mayor of Rushmore, I attended the signing ceremony in the Great Hall, when this council became the first one to sign the Armed Forces Covenant. In 2012, I was in the chair when Rushmore Borough Council unanimously agreed to launch their own Armed Forces Covenant. I'm therefore pleased to mark this council's role today in implementing the new Armed Forces Covenant duty. Now, from 2010, large numbers of elderly Gurkha veterans arrived in the UK after they were given the right to settle. Many chose Rushmore because they had the support of friends and organisations there, such as the British Gurkha Welfare Society and the Gurkha Welfare Trust. And Aldershot, of course, is the home of the British Army, which they had visited when stationed at Church Crookham. These Gurkha veterans and their wives, now in their 60s, 70s, and 80s even, came to the UK because with little or no pensions, they were often living in poverty in mountain villages in Nepal, where there were no welfare and health services. Their pensions, and many had none, are only about one-third of that of the equivalent rank of other soldiers in the British Army. Aldershot North, which I represent, includes the so-called Lower Super Output area. That's the population that is most deprived in the whole country in terms of the number of residents, that is Gurkha residents and their wives, whose only income is pension credit. Gurkha veterans have long campaigned for their pension and welfare rights. There was a hunger strike in 2013, when I visited Guyan Raj Rai in Whitehall outside Downing Street to urge him to abandon the hunger strike, as the government could never give way to hunger strikers. Only the offer of the Gurkha Welfare Inquiry by an all-party parliamentary group ended it. However, Gurkha veterans couldn't accept the results of that inquiry, so there was a second hunger strike in 2021, which ended only when the Veterans Minister and Aldershot MP, Leo Doherty, gave a letter promising inter-government talks to address all pension and welfare matters. Next month, to mark the second anniversary of that letter, Gurkha veterans will meet at Princess Hall in Aldershot to hear their representatives report back on progress in these talks, which it has to be said has been slow. Your support for this motion would be a great boost for the Gurkha veterans, as you would be showing that this council acknowledges that their concerns with respect to pensions and welfare issues should be resolved so that they finally have the justice, the equality, and the dignity that they deserve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Joy, do you wish to speak now or reserve your right to speak?
Chairman, thank you. I reserve my right, although I suspect there may not be an awful lot of debate on this.
Okay. Well, that's my next question to members. Members, question, debate, please. Councillor Barker, yes, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I have the privilege of representing Church Crookham Ushot Division, which is where the Queen Elizabeth Barracks, the former home of the Gurkhas in Hampshire, used to be. It is now a site for 1,000 houses. When the Gurkhas moved out of Church Crookham, they were asked to parade through the middle of fleet as a form of farewell. The crowds were as deep as they could be on the streets without falling into the highway. They asked some of us to do a collection for the Gurkha Welfare Trust. They gave us a bucket and an escort of a Gurkha soldier. I could have collected double what I did, because everybody wanted to shake the Gurkha soldier's hand. Each of us, between the eight of us that were carrying buckets, we collected £8,000 in coin and folding money from the people on the streets. There was no publicity for the collection, we just did it. And it's an example of the affection that so many British people have for the Gurkha soldiers, who travel halfway across the world to help us fight our wars. The service they've given us gives us a duty to look after them, and I completely support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Parker. councillor Collett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In 2010, I stepped down after a number of years as parliamentary candidate for Aldershot, and during that period, I became increasingly aware of the issue that we're discussing today. Major Tekendra Dwan was a great campaigner on behalf of the Gurkha soldiers, the retired Gurkha soldiers, and the issue really hasn't changed to this day. I always found the Gurkhas Nepali community very hospitable and friendly, and very pleased to be part of our society. But when I look at this issue, I really cannot understand why it hasn't been resolved by now. The only difference between a Gurkha soldier and another British soldier is their race, is where they come from. So why would we treat them differently at a time when we all understand the importance of equal treatment and diversity? It really is time this was resolved, and I fully support the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Collett. councillor Withers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As an officer who served 34 years in the British Army in 17 different locations around the world, I've got to say I have served not immediately with Gurkha soldiers and officers, but in the same divisions and formations. The tri-part agreement between England, India, and Nepal has always been the problem concerning these pensions. But representing Aldershot South Division, where I have large numbers of Gurkha families, I can say I don't like seeing Gurkha pensioners working in two or three jobs in order to sustain their families. Their pension, if any, is paid into a bank in Nepal, and it relies on a family member to get it transferred to the UK. That takes time. So for all they've done for this country, both at home and abroad, I fully support this motion and will support it in the future, should we not gain momentum this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Withers. councillor Forster.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't have an interest to declare, but I'd state nonetheless that my wife's dad was a British officer in the Royal Gurkha Rifles. He's passed away now, sadly. He would today be supporting this motion because it's the right thing to do. I absolutely support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Forster. councillor Glenn.
I've had the privilege of shooting at Bisley Rifle Camp since the age of 15, and have been shooting there right up until the present day. For a long period of time, the Gurkha regiments ran Bisley, for the principal reason of security, especially during the troubles in Ireland. A worthier group of soldiers you cannot meet in terms of deserving this review into their pensions. They were put in charge of the armoury, and during the term that they ran Bisley Rifle Camp, there was never a breath of a problem in anybody trying to break in. At that point, I think the cookrease were taken off them, but they were left with baseball bats and proved the point. So I'm delighted that this is a cross-party motion. I'm very glad that we're all involved in it, and it's well deserved.
Thank you very much, councillor Glenn. Any further debate? councillor Dowden.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. This actually was a surprise to me, because quite frankly, I can remember when it was Joanna Lumley that was bringing a big issue, and it was... And it was all in the media for quite some time. And I thought it had all been resolved. And it was staggering to me that we're still in this same situation today. And I, for one, I recently met the, you probably wouldn't know her, Madam Chairman, but it was the deputy mayor of Pokhara Metropolitan City from Nepal as the mayor of Test Valley. And she had a great discussion with me in the mayor's parlour. And it was one of the things that was brought up. And she had been to making representations in London to politicians, but her son was in Andover. So she wanted to see me, she thought I had the same powers. And I was staggered to find that she even cast justice on half a million people or whatever. And I tried to say to her, I didn't have any of these, I was just a civic head. But obviously, she thought differently. And I'm more than pleased to be able to support this motion. And I think, I'm sure, everybody in this council chamber will today as well. I'll be staggered if there's anybody against it, quite frankly. And this is something that should have happened a long time ago.
Thank you very much councillor Dowden. councillor Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I really welcome this motion. I thank councillor Crawford and councillor Joy for making it this fabulous cross-party motion. My father served in the Indian Army and he used to always say you couldn't meet finer, braver soldiers. And as councillor Withers has said, it's not right that they're living on the breadline, that's unacceptable. So thank you for bringing the motion, it has my full support.
Are there further debate? No? In which case I'll ask councillor Joy, councillor Joy, if you wish to make a summary.
Just a very few words, Madam Chairman. I sense we're pressing against an open door. I served for 20 years in the military, not as long as some, in the army and the Royal Air Force. And I had the privilege of working with Gurkhas. In many cases, they were jumping out of the planes that I was involved in flying. But I would reinforce everything that has been said about the fact that they are the most staunch. There are reasons, we can discuss, there are reasons. Yes, I always set myself up, it just demonstrates that some people are listening.
councillor Joy, I must remind you, you've got a total of four minutes.
Yes, so I'm not going to go on at length at all, I promise you. I just would like to, first of all, sort of thank councillor Crawford and in fact councillor Tustin for actually raising these concerns in the first place. And it's a real privilege to be able to actually join therefore in this particular motion. But I would like to clarify just a couple of points. The legacy issue that is really concerning here is the fact that there was a change which involving the rebasing of the Brigade of Gurkhas from Hong Kong to the UK. And it was at that point where the Gurkhas subsequently were allowed to then settle, those who were serving at the time were allowed to settle here. There was an element of sort of retrospective ruling on all of that. Some of the detail of that is actually in the motion and it doesn't help to actually go into the detail of that now. However, the problem is that those who retired before 1997 or were not enlisted by 1993 did not have the right to settle in the UK. From 1997 onwards, they did, those who were serving then. And also, the pensions up to that point subsequently were related to the Indian Army equivalent and so on, because they'd been previously based in Hong Kong and overseas, not here. So there are wrinkles there which a reducing minority are deeply affected by. So that's what this is all about. There has been a considerable amount of work done in partnership across the county, most particularly, I have to say, in Rushmore, where it has the highest percentage of Nepali and Gurkha residents in the country, by a country mile, to say the least. And in particular, I pay a special tribute to councillor Nem Tapper, who is the Armed Forces Champion in Rushmore, who has worked tirelessly for the best part of eight years on campaigns such as this. I pay special tribute to him and I've spent some time talking to him and exchanging correspondence. So in essence, I think, you know, we all understand that there is a problem here. I need to point out that the Armed Forces Covenant Duty, as far as local authorities is concerned, covers healthcare, housing, but does not include, does not extend to pensions. And because of that, that is why we need to ask the leader, in fact, to communicate with government to address this particular issue, because it is actually beyond our control. So on that basis, on that understanding, if you're asked by a Gurkha to see his cookery, he's not inviting you to dinner. So let's get really behind this and so on and wish the leader the best of luck in exploring communication with government. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you councillor Joy. I'd like to invite the leader now to speak, if he so wishes.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I just want to thank-
Sorry, leader, you have five minutes. You have a bit longer.
Only five minutes, Madam Chairman. Okay, all right. Just very simply, just to say thank you to all members and to thank councillor Crawford and thank councillor Joy and others for working together. And it's something that I was certainly, you've listened very carefully what you said. And I would do all that I can to make sure that we progress this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, leader. Now I'm going to invite the mover of the motion, councillor Crawford, to make any final comment, if he so wishes. And again, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have to say I'm feeling very emotional about this. Because members' wonderful comments have really brought home to me the extent of support there is certainly throughout Hampshire for the Gurkha veterans. So that is just really how strongly I feel about it. I just wanted to pick up on a couple of points as to, I believe it was councillor Collett was asking as to why it was that this hadn't been settled so far. And really, the obstacle in far as the pensions is concerned is that there seems to be a rule that pensioners' legislation cannot be backdated. So, and the other rule is that the Ministry of Defence won two court cases. And again, councillor Collett mentioned Major Teckendra Dewan had taken those court cases through the British Gurkha Welfare Society and lost at the Court of Human Rights. He'd taken it as far as European Court of Human Rights. So those are the two stumbling blocks. But of course, as we saw yesterday when the Prime Minister addressed the other issue of pensions and equality and so on, LGBTQ plus veterans. It is possible to overcome these things with goodwill and looking at particular ways of solving the problems. And that's what we're looking to the inter-government talks to do for the government in all its departments to come up with a solution which doesn't get bogged down in these historic blockages. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and thank you everyone for your tremendous support.
Thank you councillor Crawford. We have now finished debate, so all members have received the latest recommendation from, this could be added to this motion, which was circulated in your mod gov documentation. For those of you who may not have read it, I will read it out loud now. That there is a recommendation that council asked the leader of the council to write to the government to urge further exploration of scope to resolve the Gurkhas veterans' outstanding concerns with respect to pensions and other welfare issues, as this would be the most equitable way of recognising the unswerving loyalty, courage and sacrifice of these Gurkha veterans in service to the United Kingdom as soldiers in the British Army. Members, are you agreed with that recommendation?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Our second motion today has been brought forward by councillor Bill Withers. councillor Withers, yes. Would you, do you have a second to this motion?
I do, Madam Chairman.
Right, thank you. In which case, would you like to stand and table your motion, please? You have a total of five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Although I know members of the County Council received a copy of this motion, I'm still going to go through it because I feel, and I think you feel, that this is a very important subject. The background on underage vaping is that smoking is a leading preventable cause of premature death in Hampshire. And vaping can be a useful aid to help adult smokers quit. There is a clear national advice that vapes should not be used by children and young people and by people who do not smoke, because the long-term risks are not yet known and because nicotine vaping products are addictive. While the law bans the sale of nicotine vaping products to under 18s, underage vaping has become a growing concern within our community due to the addiction and potential harm, both long-term and in extreme cases in the short term. The increased use of underage vaping is in line with the national picture. And many organisations are now facing challenges with managing the presence of vapes within their settings. The motion I propose is that the council take further action to combat underage vaping and safeguard the wellbeing of our young residents. This motion seeks to strengthen targeted work in education settings as well as strengthen enforcement of underage sales restrictions at retail outlets. The aim is to create a comprehensive framework that educates and protects our youth from the dangers associated with vaping. The supporting information that goes with this is in the 2021-22 Hampshire School Survey. 29% of year 10s had tried vaping and 7% of year 10s were regular users. 4% of year 7s had tried vaping and 1% of year 7s were regular users. At least one in five secondary school students were unaware of information relating to vaping. Teachers had lower confidence teaching about vaping other than P S H E, which is Personal Social Health Economic Education subjects, as well as knife crime and personal safety, believing they lacked the necessary knowledge. The recommendations I therefore propose are, one, strengthening work primary and secondary schools in that the council should strengthen work to tackle underage vaping in collaboration with local schools, education authorities and relevant health organisations. This work will focus on educating students, parents and teachers about the risks, health consequences and legal implications of underage vaping. The aim is to empower individuals with knowledge and equip them with effective strategies to prevent and combat this issue. Recommendation two is to strengthen enforcement of underage sales restrictions. Namely, to curtail the visibility and accessibility of vaping products, the council shall continue to ensure that retail outlets do not sell vapes to under 18s and that retail outlets are fully compliant with strict national regulations on product standards, packaging requirements and responsible advertising practices. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much councillor Withers. councillor Penman, I understand that you are the second of this motion.
I am, Madam Chairman.
Do you wish to speak now or reserve your right to speak later?
I reserve my right to speak later.
All right, thank you very much. I understand that we have councillors Chagwin and Dowden. Do I have to ask for it?
Yes, I would ask for it.
I'm advised that before I go any further, I must ask members if there is an amendment to this motion. Thank you very much. What's his name? Thank you very much councillor James. Would you like to stand, come forward with your amendment, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes.
Could I see a copy? Oh, I've got it here. Beg your pardon, I've received it, yes. Yes, would you like to read it out, please?
Yes, sent it in advance. It's to, in support of the existing motion before you, it's to add bullet point three, recognising that single-use vapes are often the gateway for young people to access vaping products. They're also the cause of environmental damage and unwelcome hazard in waste collection. Hampshire County Council will support the LGA in campaigning for a ban on these products by 2024 by writing to all Hampshire MPs. And if I just go into that bit further, it's very positive. I think councillor Withers is absolutely right. There's nothing new for young people wanting to experiment.
Could you please leave discussion for later? At the moment, I need to know whether or not you have a second.
I have a second, as written on the list.
Thank you. councillor Todd, do you wish to speak now or reserve your right to speak?
I would like to reserve my right to speak.
Right, thanks. Members, we will now debate whether or not we are content to have this additional recommendation put onto the original motion. Could I have your comments? I see a lot of nodding heads. Are you all agreed?
Agreed.
councillor Crawford.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a point of order, Madam Chairman. I understood the proposer of the amendment would have the right to say why he wanted to speak about it.
Yes, you can do so now if you so wish.
Thank you, Chairman. My pleasure. Yes, I've tried to avoid using the word disposable vapes, because they're not. As anyone who's walked down the high streets will see from these things, they don't, some people dispose of them, the planet can't dispose of them. All the products aren't recyclable. But the main reason for bringing this and adding it to the existing motion was it seems strange and I think councillor Withers is absolutely right. The first thing you do is education. Young people, from all ages, have always tried to experiment. I remember trying to buy 10 packets of cigarettes wearing my school coat to cover up my uniform even on a hot sunny day. And the modern generation is no different. But of course, as grown-ups, we have to make it difficult. Like we stopped selling 10 cigarettes and made them very expensive. We can improve things by offering the education. I think that's always going to be the most effective tool we can use. And we can enforce the restrictions that exist in the existing laws. But it strikes me as very concerning, these so-called disposable vapes you can't dispose of are effectively pocket money vapes. So we design a product that we don't want children to have at a pocket money price so they can afford it, which seems a complete mystery. I will declare partial interest, I do vape. Obviously, I'm not a young person, so I'm not included in this motion. But I do think it's absolutely bizarre that we do this and allow these things to happen. I use a reusable vape, had it four, five years, works forever. Helped me give up smoking because Martin Todd told me to. But I do think, actually taking a step forward and banning the disposable vapes would not only save our high streets from a lot of mess, it would discourage young children from getting involved, stop an awful lot of lithium batteries, which we've got other uses for in our rubbish streams. Most importantly, stop young people doing what I did, getting involved in addictive substance and still struggling with it 40 years later. Thank you.
We are still, at this present time, talking about the additional recommendation. Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I was a police officer, test purchasing for alcohol and cigarettes was a very effective tool we would use. Go into businesses that were selling booze and cigarettes to people such as the gentleman on the right. Can we establish from our trading standards team that they actually have caught on to the current trend and are actually doing test purchase operations targeting businesses who are selling disposable vapes to our young people? Thank you.
I understand that councillor Fairhurst is going to respond to that question.
Yes, thank you councillor. Yes, trading standards are all over this and are carrying out visits to certain areas where we know the shops are selling to underage people. Thank you.
I currently have, waiting to speak, we're waiting to- I currently have waiting to speak, we're waiting to, councillor Chedwin, Dowden, Craig and Parker Jones. So councillor Chedwin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to congratulate councillor Withers and councillor Penman for bringing this motion forward. It's very timely. A little bit of history, way back at the end of the last century, I worked professionally for a year for an organisation called Parents Against Tobacco. It was set up by Richard Branson and the later Nita Roddick of the Body Shop, and the whole purpose was to try and educate and dissuade children from smoking, because once they took up smoking, they were hooked for life, a bit like councillor James. It was successful in many ways. We got law through Parliament, we cracked down on the promotion of tobacco products and on their sale through enforcement by our Trading Standards Department here amongst many others. But the key things I learnt, apart from the danger from smoking and from nicotine products, now vaping, the key things I learned about, apart from the obvious dangers, were, one, you have to enforce the law, and, two, you should never underestimate the cynical guile of the tobacco companies and now the vaping industry to try and promote their products to a whole new generation of users to replace those who are dying prematurely from the effect of their products. And that is still the case now with vaping. Tobacco industry and the vaping industry love vaping because they can say, oh, it's a good way to help you stop smoking. But as this motion rightly says in the introduction, the background, no one knows as yet the long-term effects of vaping, but there is increasing evidence that it is just as dangerous as smoking cigarettes. And for it to try and be promoted as being somehow a safe alternative, I suspect in years to come, we're going to find is very false. Problem is, it will be too late by then for those who are hooked on it. We need to stop children smoking in the first place or vaping, and the best way to do that, apart from enforcing, is to make it unattractive, uncool, in the same way smoking is now uncool. Relatively few teenagers smoke cigarettes now because they all vape or use nitrous oxide, which is another equally big risk. The government is actually cracking down on that, we need to crack down on vaping as well. The figures set out here on underage vaping are horrifying, the number of young people taking it up. And I therefore very much support this motion, part two more than part one, to educate people. The way to do it is not to ask teachers or parents to educate them, because if teachers and parents tell you not to do something when you're in your teenage years, you go ahead and do it. That's a fact of life. We used to use celebrities more, sportspeople particularly, I remember going around Manchester United with Bobby Charlton, and at the end he said, do you want to play for Man U? Everyone's hand went up. He said, well, if you ever smoke, you will never be fit enough, and that had more effect than any teacher. So we need to educate but use new ways. But crucially, and Lesley Meanhern's point is relevant, we need to enforce. Trading Standards have the power, we have the power to use test purchases, we have and still to this day use it on smoking, we need to use it as vaping as well, because kids do go into the shops, they get the products far too easily, just like they do nitrous oxide, and we need to crack down on that. We have a role, we need to use young people to help other young people, because if we don't, in a few years' time, we're going to have a whole new generation hooked on vaping and nicotine products, just like they were smoking. And people will die from that, and it's up to us to help and protect young people now. So thank you for the motion, I hope it will be fully supported, but more importantly, I hope our officers will be giving it priority to go out and enforce it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you councillor Chedwin. Before we go on, can I please remind members that at this present time, we are debating the additional recommendation that's been put before us, which is why not the entire motion, not the original motion, which is why I tried earlier on in this chamber to move us swiftly back to the original motion. So if members are in agreement, we can either accept the additional motion or not, and then we can add it to the substantive motion, and then you can discuss things in full. Are you agreed?
Agreed.
Right, so this chamber is agreed that you will accept the additional recommendation which has been submitted, yes. Right, thank you very much indeed. Do either the proposer or the seconder feel agreed that they've not had an opportunity to summarise on their additional recommendation? Councillor Todd?
I'd just be very brief on the subject. I do need to declare an interest, which is very relevant but is a personal, non-prejudicial one, in that I'm chief executive of a men's health charity. And as you might imagine, because men historically have smoked more than women and continue to do so, we have a strong interest in the whole question of vaping and its role in stopping people smoking. So I disagree slightly with my colleague, with councillor Chedwin. I'm a fan of vaping as a method of stopping adults smoking. It's shown very good results, and I don't think there's much doubt that they are safer than cigarettes, but that is not a very high bar. Almost anything is safer than cigarettes, including running out into a motorway with your eyes closed. So, which I'm not proposing. But of course, that doesn't mean that we should welcome non-smokers and especially young people starting to vape, so I'm very pleased that this motion has come forward. And even though the TARS and all the products of burning tobacco, which do such damage to lungs and cardiovascular health, aren't present in vaping, we shouldn't ignore the fact that nicotine is a highly addictive substance that has an effect on the developing mind. There's a very strong relationship between nicotine, anxiety, depression, ADHD, schizophrenia. And what's become clear in more recent research is it's not clear that the impact is all one way. So historically, it's been looked at that people use smoking to help address the consequences of poor mental health. There's increasing evidence that actually nicotine may have a role in causing poor mental health, and so it is important that we, particularly when, when, when young people's minds are developing, that they are not exposed to nicotine. It's not a neutral, safe activity, it's just safer than cigarettes. So the purpose of this amendment is to target the product form that is, seems to be particularly used and particularly targeted towards young people. It's to say that these single-use vapes, as they are called, the disposables, which young people are increasingly using, they're increasingly aware of, they're seeing more marketing for them, the answer is to ban them. There's a second and environmental point. Figures quoted by the Material Focus Research Group say that every year, enough disposable vapes are thrown away with, with the equivalent, and not properly recycled and reprocessed, with the equivalent of ten tonnes of lithium. That's enough for 1,200 electric vehicles. We actually know that we are facing a major resource crunch in this world. You know, these, these rare minerals are a source of geopolitical tension, we don't have enough of them for the number of vehicles that we're going to need, and so effectively just sort of throwing them away on single-use disposable items which aren't recyclable is an appalling use of resource. And even if the, the health argument was neutral, we still would need to be banning this particular form of product, because we just cannot afford to be so casual in our use of the planet's resources as we see with these products. So that's why we've put in the amendment. Needless to say, I strongly support the original motion, so I would ask colleagues to support, as you have, support the amendment, but to support the new motion that we have, which includes the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Todd. As councillor Todd has already pointed out, he was making his comments because he was the second of the amendment, right? Now, we have agreed that the amendment be accepted, we've all agreed that, so the amendment now becomes a part of the substantive first motion. So councillor Todd, you will still have an opportunity to speak if you so wish. I never doubted it for a second. So it is now open to general debate. I have still waiting to speak. Yes, we have agreed the amendment, yes. I have waiting to speak, councillor Dowden, councillor Craig, councillor Parker Jones, you may speak on the, on the original motion together with the now three recommendations. Thank you. Councillor Dowden.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, not the last HUSK meeting, but the meeting prior to that, Select Committee, I did try to raise it with the chairman, who is the proposer of this motion, about the risks, if you like, of vaping. I've never supported vaping without all the experiments done with it, and I want to actually say that even in Test Valley, Andover schools that I know, because I've seen it in the press, and I also know in southern Test Valley, the Romsey and Mountbatten schools, which are excellent schools, a lot of youngsters have been taken very ill through vape, vaping, and in fact have had to go to A and E with bleeding mouths and whatever, because sometimes they don't even know what they're vaping, quite frankly. And I think it's actually a worry, and I tried to bring it up at the Select Committee about the Integrated Care Board and the NHS actually supporting vaping. I'm not a smoker, as you know, but at the same time, I think it's wrong to actually support vaping to try and prevent tobacco smoking when you don't know fully the consequences of what you're, what you're supporting, and I agree with councillor Chedwin on that. It is a real worry. For example, over the last twelve months, with the Integrated Care Board supporting it, the NHS supporting it, it's almost trebled the number of youngsters smoking in one year, treble. What we are doing is madness, I believe. For example, I know some youngsters who have had smoking, who were smoking and have been taken to have hypnosis, and hypnosis has cured them. And other people I know, adults who were smokers for years, have been cured by hypnosis. And there was obviously patches and whatever, but to actually start putting stuff down your throat, which you don't know what you're inhaling, quite frankly, is madness. And so, schools up in Andover, you would have seen it, councillor, the leader of the council would have seen it in the press there, they've had problems there, and they've had it in Romsey, and I'm no doubt in other schools all throughout Hampshire. Youngsters are being damaged with this stuff, and the quicker we do, you know, I support these motions, of course I do, and the amendment, but the quicker they're banned, as far as these disposable ones, which not only, as is talked about, the lithium, we'll need that more than ever, is just plain madness. So I support the motion and the amendment together, incorporate it now together, but really, we really need to consider, and the Integrated Care Board and the NHS, of what they're putting out there, because youngsters are saying to me, ah, but Alan, because they just called me Alan, but the NHS say it's okay. Sorry.
Thank you very much councillor Dowden. Councillor Craig.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to put my support on this one and actually really welcome the amendment to this about banning disposable ones. Part of the problem with children being addicted to these are the fruit flavours that are so keen to them, and I think what a lot of people don't actually realise is the amount of sugar that is in those vapes, that those children are getting addicted to as well. And it's, they're beginning to say, the dentists, that they, they think this is a problem to children's teeth as well, just the amount of sugar that are in those vapes. I know that Gavin said about them being pocket money prices. Along with that, the way they're being stored in shops, they're actually being targeted for shoplifting as well. Quite often, the children will just go in, they're on the side, they put them in their pocket, they go outside, so a lot of them are just easy to put in pockets and taken away that way. And more needs to be done about these disposable ones, because we, we've actually, this week in my patch, had a bin fire. Somebody disposed of them in, in household waste, actually know it was recyclable waste, but put them in the bin, and it caused a bin fire. So the whole bin had to be dumped, fire brigade called, and then all collected afterwards. And unfortunately for, for our chaps out on the street, the bin was nearly full, so it was, it was a big job cleaning it up afterwards. So I actually welcome, for all the reasons said, plus the fact that we've had the bin fire and these children getting addicted, the shoplifting, the added to the police, all of those as well, totally agree with this and support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Craig. Councillor Parker Jones?
Thank you. And I will try not to repeat what councillor Craig and councillor Todd have said, because they're very similar. I wanted to raise, why I wanted to support the amendment, because I organise a monthly litter pick, and they are the scourge of our local area now, they're absolutely everywhere. We should not be using single-use plastics in such a way, we should be treasuring our natural resources, we should be leaving them in the ground for as long as possible, and when they do need to be used, because plastic has a place, then it needs to be used for very, very important things, not for something which can be just thrown on the floor. And I was going to mention the bin fire, where the lorry caught fire in Berzeldon and had to be tipped up, but that's also been mentioned. So I support this, not only on health grounds, but on the environmental health grounds as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Parker Jones. Is there further debate on this? Right, in that case, I will ask councillor Penman to make any further comments he wishes. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I haven't got much to say. What I was going to say has already been said, but what I would like to say, that I hope this gets the full support of the chamber, cross-party, it's been a great debate, and this is something which I think is important for every youngster. And as I say, Bill and I thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Penman. Leader, I'd invite you to speak if you so wish for five minutes.
Keep doing it, Madam Chairman. No, it's just to say, it's really great to see that cross-party again in agreement, and thank Bill Neville and councillor James as well, and councillor Todd for the amendment as well, and really pleased to see that it's supported by all, and have noted the role and sort of the position that it leaves me about trying to take this forward as the previous motion as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Leader. And finally councillor Withers, if you wish to speak for five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody today for supporting the, the motions and the additional recommendation at three. Anything we can do towards the subject matter of vaping is extremely important. I note what councillor Dowden said about bringing it up at a HUSK meeting. It will be looked at for the work programme at that time. It wasn't a relevant item to be included on the agenda that day, despite the fact that it is a very important subject. So I thank him for mentioning it again today. The situation with vaping shops is that they're opening everywhere. They're cheap shops to open, they make vast amounts of money. I've got three in one street and three in the next street to that one street, and I've seen five girls from school passing a vape around. I know someone with, who's found fifteen in one room in his family, another family found twenty-five in, in their daughter's bedroom. I know a daughter that has said to her mother, I've got a problem, I'm addicted. I think we all realise that this is a cheap item available, as someone's mentioned earlier, compared to the cost of cigarettes. And the sooner we ban it in England... And the sooner we ban it in England, the better, for not only environmental reasons, but to stop numbers which have quadrupled this year attending A and Es with throat, head and chest complaints, as mentioned throughout this motion. It's something which needs prompt action, and I look forward to the leader writing not only to the MPs, but to the Prime Minister and Secretary of State for Health on this matter. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Withers. Right, members, I now turn to the recommendations, which are on page 105 to 106, and also to the amended, the amendment that you received, the third recommendation, which you've received in the form of a slip of paper today. And I'm not going to read them all out, but I ask whether or not you are willing to accept the three recommendations, the three recommendations. I have agreed. Right, thank you very much indeed, members. We now go on to matters for information only, part two of the agenda, item 12. The first item 12A is to receive any questions from the HIW FRA. Well, no questions have been received by myself, so there's no response there. Item 12B is their report, and I'm going to invite councillor Vaughan to present his report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've only one small thing to add. The Fire Service have opened a survey to ask people their views on the risks that concern them most in their local areas. These results will be used to help develop the 2025-2030 safety plan, which will set out the risks in Hampshire and the Isle of Wight, and how the service plans on meeting, minimising and mitigating them. So I would ask members, plead with members, if they could promulgate what I will send them this afternoon around their residence in order to fill out the surveys, who we can then, it will come back to the authority for approval later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vaughan. Are there any questions for councillor Vaughan? Is there any debate? In that case, thank you very much indeed for your report, which has been noted. Thank you. We now go on to item 13, the annual report of the Hampshire 2050 Corporate Services and Resources Select Committee. I'd like to invite councillor Glenn to introduce this report.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I have great pleasure in presenting the annual report of the newly established 2050 Corporate Services and Resources Committee. Just a couple of items. It's a real privilege to be chairman of this committee, especially with its enhanced powers. And I have also spent some time, quite a lot of time, sitting and listening to other scrutiny committees so that we get a wider view at our committee about what's actually being debated throughout the year. I'd like to tell you that scrutiny is alive and well in Hampshire County Council, and it's something we should all be proud of, and it does a great job. I'd like to appeal to everybody here to bring forward items that you think are important for discussion. I don't mind if you email me or you email any of the other chairmen, and we can just pass these ideas from council to council, depending what committee it should go on. I'd like to pay tribute to all the current and past members of the, the councillors of all the committees. And I'd also like to pay tribute to all the officers who have done tremendous reports for us all and have aided the debates and the questions that have gone on this year. And should there be any questions, I would like to ask, if they are relevant to any of the other committees, would those chairmen be ready to stand up and answer those questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you, councillor Glenn. Are there indeed any questions for councillor Glenn and the report? Councillor Crawford.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a couple of questions for the chairman of the Children and Young People Select Committee, which is included in this report. The first one is on the home-to-school transport policy, public consultation and so on. The question I have is that, as we learned earlier in the day, this is the biggest financial risk that the council is facing up to 2025-26. And I wonder if it would be opportune for the Children and Young People Select Committee to carry out an urgent review to make sure that they feel that the preparations are in place to deal with that urgency of demand. And the second question I have is about the section to do with the Children's Service Safeguarding Report. And it's to do with the, sorry, the autism, is it, no, sorry, paragraph 2.5, the update on autism services. What I've discovered recently is that there seems to be a gap in provision in terms of children of Nepalese families being picked up when they may be autistic, because, and I don't know what's causing this, but it seems to be that this is something that needs to be looked at in terms of how that particular service can interact with Nepalese families. Is it by offering to have translation? Or is there some more deep-seated difficulty in getting to grips with the problem in that community? Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed for your questions, councillor Crawford. I'm going to ask councillor Penman to stand and address those issues.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'll ask the officers, and we'll get back to you, is that okay? Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions on the report for the Select Committee chairman? Right? Sorry, in which case, I would like to thank councillor Glenn for bringing this report to this chamber, and note the acceptance of the report. Thank you very much. Item 14 is the annual report of the Health and Adult Social Care Select Committee. And now I'd like to invite councillor Withers to present this report to the chamber.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. All the members present have received a copy of the annual report for Health and Social Care Scrutiny Committee. Before I ask if anybody's got any questions, I would like to publicly thank all the officers and departments in the county council that have enabled the administration and provision of all the health and social care services that are given from April 2022 to March 2023, and enabling the scrutiny committee, who I thank the members being, supporting me on that committee, for doing our job in scrutinising the services that have been given to the residents of Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Withers. Are there any questions from the chamber? Is there any debate that members wish to raise? No? In which case, it is for us to thank councillor Withers for bringing this report to the council. We thank him very much indeed, and your report has noted. We now go on to item 15 of the agenda, executive and committee reports. The first one is the executive lead member for children's services, and I'd like to invite councillor Heron to present this report.
Chairman, I'm pleased to present the report as on the papers.
Thank you, councillor Heron. Are there any questions in the report for councillor Heron? Is there any debate? In which case, I thank councillor Heron for bringing the report to the council, and the report is noted. 15B, the executive member for education, I'd like to invite councillor Forster to present his report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This report speaks for itself. I'd like to present it as written, just to highlight the fact that the increase we've seen in send places, as detailed in the report, is a concern, it's a national issue, and that is why this county continues to invest in providing facilities.
Thank you, councillor Forster. Are there any questions for councillor Forster? Any debate? In which case, I'd like to thank councillor Forster for his report, it's much appreciated. And with that, I'm sure you will be quite pleased to see that it is the final item on the agenda. Before I close this meeting, I would like to, I would genuinely like to say a huge thank you to all members for their hard work and for participating in debate and discussion. It makes everything so worthwhile. So thank you for your attendance, do have a safe journey home, and I think at this point, we can ask for the webcam to be stopped and turned off.